This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right, and assistive listening devices are available. Bruce, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
The month of November is pancreatic cancer awareness month, and we have a resident of Highland Park who has been a strong advocate for awareness of this particular type of cancer, and at this point, Franco, I'd like you to come up and join me as I read this proclamation. Whereas in 2017, an estimated 53,670 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 43,000 will die from the disease; and whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, it's currently the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second-leading cause around 2020; and whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 9 percent; and whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 71 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, whilst 91 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years; and whereas approximately 1,270 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2017; and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related death across the world; and whereas there were an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2015; and whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Highland Park are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risk factors of pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, now therefore I, Gail Burrell Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby designate November 16th, 2017, as World Pancreatic Day. Franco, would you say a few words?
Sure. Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the Borough Council doing this, and it's important because there isn't a screening test, there isn't something akin to a colonoscopy or a mammogram that folks can go for. So it's things like this that raise awareness, to keep this top of mind, and it also helps to let people know that this is an underfunded cancer, and that's why the survival rate is so low, at 9 percent, which is terrible. I'm blessed to be here nine years after my diagnosis, it's amazing, but again, it's there's a direct correlation between money spent in research and survival rate, and we've done really well with a lot of cancers, and that's terrific, and this is one that's been neglected, and so proclamations like this, and you know, folks knowing about it changes things, so.
And Franco, we are blessed to have you with us.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go through our council reports. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, would you start us off today, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start off with the fire department, last month was fire prevention month, and they did a number of tours in our schools, bringing awareness to our students, and demonstrations at the firehouse with giveaways. They also have, if you visit their website, all the safety precautions that should be taken during the holiday season, especially Halloween, about how keeping our children safe, and that's on their website, you can take a look at that. It's also timed by our fire department to change our batteries in our smoke detectors and our carbon dioxide detectors, and they want to make sure that everyone stays safe here in Highland Park. Our police department did the National Drug Take Back Day, that was from October 28th to the 29th here in Highland Park, and we collected 63 pounds of pharmaceutical that was surrendered during the two-day operation, and that was really good. And if people do have additional medicines that they would like to dispose of, Safe Drugs here in Highland Park will collect them, and also at the, we are not collecting them here at our police department, but in Edison, at their police department, they have a facility where they can take that. And we're advising everyone, please do not flush your unused medication down the drain because it goes into the wildlife, it goes out into, and our fish can be affected by that, so we're encouraging everyone not to do that. Also, I think Councilmember Kim is going to talk about the Veterans' Day that's coming up this Friday, this weekend, but our police department and First Aid Squad was honored at the Knights of Columbus on October 23rd. St. Paul's have the Knights of Columbus, and they honored Sergeant Ted Haas from the Police Department, Michael Gershon from the Fire Department, and Robin Lowenstein from the First Aid Squad for the horrific acts that they performed, lifesaving acts that they have performed. So that, they were honored on the 23rd, and it was, unfortunately, this year I was not able to make it, but it was wonderful knowing that their work and contribution that they have done in Highland Park is being honored yearly by the Knights of Columbus. This morning, we had a groundbreaking of the new teen center over on Sixth Avenue, and we're seeking members of the community, especially the teens, to come out and be on a teen council that will be looking at what kind of items and what kind of programs that we should be putting into the center. We have ideas, we have staff members to help, but we really would look for your input to be a part of this, want you to come in, share your ideas, share your thoughts. On that said, we had a very good report last week, when in the newspaper that Highland Park was one of the lowest crime rate towns in the state of New Jersey. We rank number three, and that's something that we really should be proud of because we rank in number three out of all the municipalities, that we have the lowest crime rate. So again, keeping Highland Park safe, our public safety team, our police, our fire, our first aid are always doing their job, and kudos to our police department to keep Highland Park safe. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
I do not, this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Kim, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, just a few reminders of some upcoming events and some few past success events that we had. For the Arts Commission, we held the Book Arts Workshop on November 2nd, the registration was filled, and then even spilled over to a waiting list, it went very well. This is their second year actually doing this workshop for the residents. On the 18th, at 7:30 PM at the Senior Youth Center, we will have a Highland Swing Concert. It's a new Highland Park-based jazz ensemble. And for the Senior Center on November, Tuesday, November 20th, we will have our annual Thanksgiving Day Senior Luncheon at noon, so stop over and enjoy some pre-Turkey celebrations right before Thanksgiving, and kosher meals are available upon request. Last but not least, this Saturday, we will be having the Veterans' Day Parade with a ceremony starting at 11:00 AM, starting at the Doughboy Monument, and the parade will end in New Brunswick. Thank you to all the veterans for your service, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councilman George, do you have a report?
Yes, just briefly, Mayor. Just to remind the community, I met with DPW this morning for my monthly meeting, one of the concerns they wanted to point out is, of course, we know that many authorities have said there is no climate change, but due to climate change and the funny weather we had in the fall, the leaves are going to be dropping later this year, so you're probably going to be cleaning them up into December, and they're anticipating that, and they are planning for that. I'd like to remind everyone that, once again, we're providing recyclable leaf bags for you to put out for collection, there is a rather high limit of 20 bags per address, they're available at DPW, but I was asked to remind everybody that it's first come first served because we're not going to get another batch. So the leaves will be late, you have time to pick up the bags, but don't forget to do so. We have bulk trash pickups coming up in December, which they wanted me to remind everybody of. They're also going to try and do some last-minute pothole repairs for some of the other areas that need repair, however, following along with the climate, most of the asphalt plants stop producing asphalt because it's an outdoor process which is controlled by the temperature, so when it gets too cold, and as you noticed, the last couple of nights have been dropping into the upper 30s, those plants will be closing, but we're going to continue to try and do more pothole repair separate and apart from the paving projects while the plants are still open. Sustainable Highland Park, at the end of last month, the Bags Program is still doing well, the signs are appearing in more stores, the project appears to be going very well, there will be a couple more locations, more events where they'll be trying to give out more circulating bags, and the movie Bagit will be run even more times. With regard to the Environmental Commission, they've been designing a new website that's a lot more informative, there was a test run of it recently, we found some bugs in it that we need to work out, we also discussed creating a lot more linkages to Borough, even the Board of Education, to all the other websites that are relevant to the county's website, we're hoping that that's up in December, the rollout, it looked really good. One of the other things is Highland Park photographers who take, there are a lot of them who take nature shots of a professional quality, so they'll be running, featuring, however, some of the earlier pictures such as the construction of the environmental center will probably be archived at this point in time. Shade Tree Advisory Committee, their meeting's actually scheduled to start in about 35 minutes downstairs, they are in the planning for next year stage with regard to the supply and the cost to DPW so that they can do the contracting. They ask once again that anybody who's interested in having a street tree planted in the verge at their location, they're planning on planting at least a minimum of 31 next year in addition to trees planted for the town, so if you have a request, they have the species list that's appropriate for the area, and the trees are available. Your obligation is to make sure they're watered and not cut down by weed whackers, string trimmers, or lawn mowers, but the Borough will plant them. Lastly, the Highland Park Trail Volunteers continued their work at the meadows, they're reconstructing the entrance, they're clearing some of the areas, they did, I believe, receive a, were able to get some additional native species to put in the meadows area, they did, we were working last month on the wisteria cleanout with some volunteers, it was very arduous work, but then, along with Councilwoman Kim, we pointed out that the wisteria vines make great weavings, and the arts collective glommed onto that, and they've been doing the cleanup because they're taking the vines to weave their projects.
Yeah.
So a very nice coordination there for invasive species that are recycled. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, just a few things. The, again, I'm pleased to announce that the Highland Park Municipal ID officially launched on October 31st, please get yours here at Borough Hall, here's mine, maybe Gary Leslie can, we can zoom in, but this is, so this is an official primary point of government-issued identification that allows for proof of residency and identity for access to any municipal agency. I see some folks from the library here, the library will also accept it as primary proof of residency and identity, and what can be done is that you bring it to the library, they put it, they stick a barcode on the back, and it's your library card. Just a few things to note, applicants must be at least 14 years old and a resident of the Borough of Highland Park, applicants must show proof of identity and residency, details are available on the website, at www.hpborough.com. Office hours for applications are Tuesdays from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM, and Thursday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. ID cards are valid for two years from the time of issuance, ID cards are intended to assist in the identification of the valid cardholder for the purposes of obtaining services from the Borough of Highland Park and at the discretion of businesses within the Borough of Highland Park, and that's an important point, this is, this program will develop over time, and we have already received commitments and anticipate further cooperation from our stores and from Main Street of Highland Park. There is a cost, it's $15 for adults, and $7 for seniors, youth, and veterans, but applicants can request a hardship waiver with no questions asked. You can view additional details and review the application at www.hpborough.com. And just a few upcoming meetings, we have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow, Thursday, November 9th at 7:00 PM in the downstairs conference room. Tonight's Housing Authority meeting was canceled due to tonight's council meeting, and it's been rescheduled for next Wednesday, November 15th, 6:30 PM, at the Cronin Building next door at 242 South Sixth Avenue. The Human Relations Commission meeting, of which a member is here, will meet next Wednesday, November 15th at 7:00 PM here at the lower-level conference room at Borough Hall at 221 South Fifth Avenue, but please enter at the South Sixth Avenue entrance. Somehow I'm going to pull my, you know, do my magic trick of being at two meetings at the same time between that and the Housing Authority, but it'll happen. The Commission for Universal Access will hold its monthly meeting Monday, November 20th at 7:30 PM here in the Berman Conference Room on the main level here at Borough Hall, and that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Welkowitz, would you like to give us a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited that tonight the governing body is having the first reading of a new redevelopment agreement with Mr. Anton Popov of the International Market on Raritan Avenue near North Second. This is the first redevelopment project that's been shepherded through our new area in need of rehabilitation screening committee, which we formed in January of this year. We've been working with Mr. Popov during the course of the year, and his plan has now been approved by both the Redevelopment Agency and the Planning Board. The creation of the screening committee has not only streamlined the process, but we feel we have the ability to ask for more things for the Borough from developers, and we are approving final plans that are much more aligned with the kind of redevelopment we truly want and need in Highland Park. The redevelopment agreement, once signed by the developer, binds him into beginning the project within nine months and completing the build within two years. It's been a long time since we've seen a new building on the avenue, and I'm confident that this sends the right message out to other developers, that Highland Park is open for business. Special thanks to our screening committee made up of volunteers from our Redevelopment Agency, Planning Board, Zoning Board, and Main Street. And then a couple of other things with regard to our Main Street. The great weather, ghoulish spirits, and the need for sweets drew out a record crowd at this year's Halloween on the avenue last week, thanks to Main Street, all the volunteers, the musicians, and all the participating businesses who made it a big success and help continue this Highland Park tradition. Don't forget that our farmer's market harvest season is still going strong throughout November and into December, they're open Fridays from 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM. We have many other Main Street events throughout November and December as we enter the winter holiday season. This Saturday and Sunday, November 11 and 12, from noon to 6, join us for our first two-day Central Jersey pop-up flea market right here in Highland Park. It's free to enter, and it's at 431 Raritan Avenue. Pop-up markets are a great way to bring unusual items to our residents looking for antiques, vintage home decor, artwork, and more. This Friday evening, our newest business, Chamber 43 at 320 Raritan Ave., will host a wine, cheese, and snacks gathering courtesy of New Athens Corner, immediately followed up by a night of music at Pinot's, music starts at 7:00 PM. This Sunday, November 12, from 8:00 to 4:00, join National Novel Writing Month organizers for an all-day write-off at Blank Space. Guess the number of words written by the host, and he'll write you into his new novel. Thanks Christine Leputka for organizing this great event in Highland Park, it's true that he will do that. Next Tuesday, November 14 at 7:00 PM, enjoy delicious coffee drinks and snacks at OQ Coffee while participating in an important discussion on sustainable solutions to disaster relief organized by Racees Cultural Center. Special thanks to Nicole Wines. Volunteer for Main Street's Winter Interest Planting Day on November 19th. Our special annual Small Business Saturday and Tree Lighting is November 25th. Join us all day into evening for your holiday shopping at the small businesses in town. Keeping it local is better for our tax dollars and to maintain our vibrant downtown. And in December, save the date for our menorah lighting on December 12th and our Kwanzaa celebration on December 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're going to have a very busy season downtown. Okay, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
It's not a report, but I would just like to call out one item that's on the consent agenda, the application to the local government energy audit program at the Board of Public Utilities is something I'm very excited about, which would essentially, if they accept our application, provide for free fairly detailed energy audits of the Borough buildings in town, with the goal toward doing upgrades over time to help both make our buildings more efficient and save us some money. So that's something I'm really excited about, and I'll just use the platform to also encourage residents because the Board of Public Utilities has programs that residents can take advantage of in their own home, and you can find me offline, and I'd be happy to point you in that direction.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very excited about that program, too, thank you for coordinating it. I have a couple of things. Oh, Borough Attorney, did you have a report?
I have a report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a couple of things, a week or two ago, Assemblywoman Nancy Pinkin came to my office to meet with me and Councilman Hirsch and members of our Board of Health to talk about the opioid epidemic in New Jersey, and of particular concern to us in Highland Park was the effect of this epidemic on the children of those who are addicted, and she spent quite a bit of time talking with us and gave us some good ideas for programs to move ahead. Our police chief, Risco, joined us at the meeting and informed us about some of the programs already in the works with the police department, so we are concerned about this, but we are taking a look at what we can do to help our, the youngest members of our community that are affected by this epidemic. Last week, we had our first Paint with the Mayor event, it was held at the Senior Center, and there were three tables filled with painters. I am so proud of my painting, I have it in my office. We had such a great time, I was able to talk with some of our residents about some of their concerns, and everyone left with their own masterpiece, including the mayor. We have, also as you know, we formed a part of the Communications Committee, which is Civics for the Community, and what this group has been doing is putting together civics lessons for our residents, the first of which was about state government, and it was very well-attended, and it was really worthwhile, as I was born and raised in New York, and I can tell you almost anything about New York state history, but New Jersey history was alien to me, and I found it quite interesting to learn how things developed here, and in fact, how the whole idea of counties came into play and freeholders. So I'm telling you this because we have our second installment of Civics for the Community, how does local government work? The speaker that we will be having for this second go-round is Mark Pfeifer, who is the Assistant Director of Blaustein's Local Government Research Center at the Blaustein School for Planning and Public Policy at Rutgers. It is being held Tuesday evening, November 28th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Highland Park Senior Center, it's open to the public, there will be light refreshments, and I really do encourage everyone to come and learn about local government. Okay, we're ready for our first 15 minutes of public discussion, does anyone have something they would like to discuss, and if so, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Wharton, and I live on 119 Johnson Street.
Hi, I'm Emily Berman, and I live on 442 South Second.
We're from the Women's Issues Club at Highland Park High School, we are the co-presidents this year, and we're wanting to talk to you about the Period Project, which we're working on, and we also worked on it last year, so. Yeah, so it's a project that works to collect feminine hygiene products, which we then donate to women shelters, food pantries, like in New Brunswick and Highland Park, so last year we got a little over 300 donations, and last year we donated to Women Aware Catholic Charities, Elijah's Promise, and Highland Park Food Pantry.
Yeah, so this year we're doing it again because last year it was so successful, and we just kind of wanted to bring awareness to this, so ways you guys can help the homeless women in our community and surrounding communities is to donate on our, through a link on our Facebook page.
The Facebook page is The Period Project and then Highland Park High School Women's Issues Club.
And we have a wish list, an Amazon wish list on there, and it gives you a variety of different feminine hygiene products and different prices, so your contribution would be greatly appreciated, and there's also boxes around town via Apple list.
So there's a box, they're bright pink boxes, really hard to miss, in Safe Drugs, Unite Pharmacy, the Reform Church, and there's also one in the center hall at the high school, so that is along with the wish list. If there's other ways that you would like to donate, there's, like you can order from Walmart, Costco, and just use the address that's on the Amazon, and it'll go to the same.
We also ask that if you do donate, make sure the packages of the feminine hygiene products are unopened, and you can't donate like individual pads or individual tampons, but other than that, you can contact.
Either one of us.
Either one of us through Facebook, and yeah.
So I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing, I know how successful it was for you last year. A couple of thoughts that come to mind, first of all, as Council President Welkowitz just asked me, we could probably put a collection box down on the lower level, I know, on the lower level.
This is a good cause.
On the lower level of the building here, which is where we On the lower level of the building here, which is where we put a collection box to help the victims of the Houston storms. Just one second, and then I'll... And the second thing is, if you could get your information to Stacy Kaplan, who is our communications person here, she will put it on our Facebook page, so we can help you promote this. And Councilwoman Foster Dublin, did you...
I was gonna also suggest that over at the Senior Center might be a good location as well.
Yeah. So just to help you with this, when you come in to Borough Hall with your box or boxes, see Stacy Kaplan. She's in the office right at the front there, and she can help you find a place for it downstairs because she knows where we put these things, and also take you over to the Senior Center to see if there's a place there. Okay?
Kaylee, definitely bring this up at Human Relations, too, and I'll mention, I'll bring it up to the Board of Health, because this is, not only does this serve a need, but I think it underscores the tax, essentially, of, you know, the female tax when it comes to these products, and the disproportionate burden there is depending on how you were born. So I think that this is a phenomenal cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. When does your project end? When do you wrap up?
Thank you. Okay, any other public discussion? Please state your name and address.
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. I would like to thank Councilwoman Kim for bringing out November the 11th Veterans Day. She did a very excellent job. I would like to elaborate just a moment on a couple of points, please. This November the 11th, the parade in Highland Park will start at 11 o'clock. We are asking all the families in Highland Park to bring your children, your grandchildren. They would love to see this parade. It's a historical event that every family in Highland Park will never forget, that it was the veterans who are giving everyone the right to freedom, and don't ever forget Before I sit down, I would like to mention just the one, one very important fact concerning veterans, and every veteran that is watching me and listening to me, they know that I am telling the truth. On Veterans Day, please, take a moment to give thanks to our doctors and our nurses who did a magnificent job of helping us out on the field. The veterans know exactly what I'm talking about. These doctors and nurses deserve many, many thanks, and we will never forget the wonderful service that they did for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the capital ordinance for various fencing projects for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for various fencing projects in the Borough of Highland Park appropriating $17,327 to pay the cost has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits publication are in file. The ordinance was posted amid available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Any public comment?
Mayor, if I may, just for the public certification, this project is for fencing. One of the larger projects is to put up a less destroyable fence around the beehives to make sure that that continues to thrive, as well as some other locations about town.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of the ordinance concerning public discussion for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning public discussions and meetings of the mayor and council has been introduced in writing by the council as a whole for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Roll call, please. Oh, may I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes, but do we want to offer, just to explain?
Yes, I'll be happy to explain it. So this is an ordinance that actually puts into writing the practice that we have here at Borough Hall, which is that in the first public discussion time, we're allotted 15 minutes for discussion. And then the second public portion of the meeting, which comes after our voting, there is no limit to how long that discussion can go. So it just helps make things more efficient and allows us to get to the voting on all of this before we get into very heavy discussions. Thank you. Would you like to vote now?
Oh, I think I do. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, would you report on introduction of the Downtown Redevelopment Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, amending the Highland Park Downtown Redevelopment Plan dated September 13, 2005, as amended and supplemented, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh. She did.
Yeah.
Can I take it?
Go ahead.
I mentioned this in my opening comments. This is the new redevelopment agreement for Anton Popov, exactly. Thank you. Ready?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Long time coming. Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Look forward to more wonderful projects on the avenue. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Absolutely.
Okay. Nice work to the entire Economic Development Committee. Thank you. Okay.
And also, Phil George was also involved with this back last year as well.
Right.
So thank you, Councilman George.
And it was indeed a long time coming, went through many changes. It was also one of the first projects, fortunately relatively small, to actually go through the entire redevelopment agency process, and we all learned a lot by it, and Council President has streamlined a lot of the applications work and working with the redevelopment agency. We started that streamlining, but we saw what was involved, because it was all theoretical before this one came along. It's been a learning experience. The developer worked with us as much as we worked with him. It's a long time coming. Congratulations.
Okay. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I'm seeing you pull your thread up. It looked like you were raising your hand. May I have a motion to table consent items 32, 33, and 39?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following items, number 13 through number 31, and then number 34 to number 38, and then finally, number 42 to 41.
So moved.
Second.
Can I modify that a second? It's 42 to 42. Can you move that again, please?
So moved. Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes, I'm glad that among the important resolutions on the consent agenda is the resolution, it's number 38, I had it number 38 on the agenda, and it's a resolution to approve emergency repairs to the library roof. And I vote yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes, and I am happy to have, since I've joined the council, have our first grant application for the Arts Commission, although they had it last year also, get on the consent agenda to continue to offer you guys the spoken word autobiography workshop that we offered last year, too, and continue to bring arts to Highland Park. Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I am appointing the following, Abby Stern Cordenali, to the Public Information Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved. Good choice.
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk, could you please report on the election of the volunteer firefighter?
I've been notified by the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of two firefighters, Eddie Ganatra and Jerry Salad.
Okay. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
All right, we're about to go into our second public discussion period. Anybody have something to discuss? Mrs. Bicard?
Mrs. Bicard, 307 Magnolia, I first of all would like to say, I've said it before, but tonight is the worst, I think. Your microphones are just so low, I can't hear you, and I have hearing aids, and I still can't hear.
Yeah, we are going to take a look into this, Mrs. Bicard. It was a crazy week, and...
That would be very helpful.
Yes.
I had a couple of questions, but you've crossed those out. I just want to tell you that I have an ID that was given to me when I moved here.
Is your picture on it?
Yes.
Yeah, even my picture on it.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
When did you move here?
In 2003.
2003?
Yeah, we were given that out there.
Really?
And I have one from Middlesex County as well, when I lived in New Brunswick. I'm well identified. And I usually carried around with me.
Oh, well, now you can update your photo and get a new one.
Fine. This one is more appealing to me.
But it's not more appealing to us. We like you just the way you are.
Thank you. Yeah, the one thing, subject that you are not talking about tonight, number 38, but it really concerns me because I see it all the time, and that's bicycling. I see the kids riding around attached to their bicycles.
39.
No helmets, no bells. I have to get off the sidewalk with my dog because the bicycles.
I'm going to ask Councilwoman Welkowitz and then Councilwoman Foster Dublin to respond to that?
Please.
So this is initiative that some of the people on our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee have been very involved with. Cindy Steiner from the New Jersey Bicycle and Pedestrian Coalition has been pushing for this. There's a current bill in the Senate right now, and we're trying to get it moved out of committee onto the Senate floor for a vote before the end of December. I wanted to get a resolution on here, and the League of Municipalities was going to draft something for us, but they didn't have it ready in time. So we missed the deadline for this agenda, but we'll have it on the next agenda. And the point of this is that we'd like to get up to 20 questions on the New Jersey driver's license exam as part of the exam requirement that specifically address the rights of bicyclists and pedestrians and some of the rules of the road, so that drivers can understand better how to share the road. And so that's what this whole initiative is about.
Well, I think, I remember when I first moved to Highland Park, Wednesday was on my side of the street, the sweep up that goes through. I haven't seen a, my street cleaned in, I don't know when, how many years ago, because, I mean, I'm a landlady. I have three students, two cars. Next door to me live in two apartments, five or six students. Each one has a car or a motorcycle. The streets aren't wide enough, and there's not enough parking space, and it's a real problem. And the worst part is that the bicyclists, they think that they have priority on the use. If they're on the bike and the kid is attached to right behind the parent or whoever the grown-up is, we have to step aside.
Yeah, well, I do know that we have a Safe Walking and Cycling Committee that's working on making things safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, and I know Councilwoman Foster Dublin, you wanted to say something?
I'm gonna, tonight, when we come out of here and we go to our next discussion, in the Public Safety Committee, we talked about what can we do to get manufacturers involved? And one of the things that we're looking at is, I've drafted a letter that we're going to be looking at, and I've identified the bicycle manufacturers, and we want to write them directly for them to install not only just the bells on the bike in the factories, but some kind of reflector as well, because that's another part of the problem that we see.
If I may respond to that, in New Brunswick, you had to get a license. You had to renew it every year. It was, I don't know, $5, $7, a minimal amount, but you couldn't get a license if you didn't have a bell attached to your car. So I don't know who gave it to me. Somebody from Robert V. Johnson gave me money, had heard about it, I've been volunteer work there, gave me money to go and buy bells. In a bicycle store on, whatever the main street is, I already keep forgetting that. And I took those bells there to the store. These are Spanish-speaking people, and I spoke Spanish well at that time, and I attached them to the bicycle that the kids, at least happened. You can't get a bike out of his store, or I don't know now, but at that time, no bike left his store without a bell.
And based on that, Mrs. Bicard, your story that you shared, that's what gave me the inspiration of writing the manufacturers directly. I've identified the three large manufacturers of bicycling in the U.S., and we're going to craft a letter to them and encourage them to, and all the environmental reasons, too, why it's safe and it's better, and the health and the environmental reasons why people should be using the bicycles, and not only using that, but the safety that comes with that. And if they're manufacturing millions of bicycles, it's not going to cost that much for them to install a bell and some reflector lights.
I just want you to know, I used to live in New Brunswick and teach in East Brunswick, and I wrote my bike... and I rode my bike when I, while my husband's car.
Thank you.
Good night, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, any other public discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss possible litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Good night, all.
Thank you.